Be here. All right, for a little bit of a late start, I was a long ways from here and I wasn't driving. So you know, you kind of push them along, but anyway, it took a minute to get here. First item on the agenda here is discussion regarding Ogden Valley Corporation. John, you're listed first. Are you the one that's going to take the lead here?
I think we just want to introduce that we have an opportunity to meet with some citizens in Ogden Valley tonight. Looking forward to that and just wanted to get their inputs, see if we had anything that we could provide information and give a little bit of the idea of the structure of how the incorporation looks and see what questions they have.
Great. I have no problem with that. You know, this is a part of our plan. It's the way the system works. And if you want to look at incorporation, you have every right to do it, right? And so, yeah, I don't have an issue with this.
We've had a variety of people that have brought forward questions. Jen here in our office here has brought a series of questions to us and we try to speak to those. We've also got a group of questions that we'll have year-end data for that we can answer by the middle of next month. And we plan on going up and just having a more thorough discussion at that point as far as including more data. Tonight, I think it's just an introduction and a little bit of the framework. And at that point, maybe-
Who's going?
Sean and I.
John and I are going, yeah.
Well, Sean is, and I'm going to go with him.
Do you need anyone else? Do you anticipate any legal questions or happy to help?
I don't know. And so I'll leave that. Sean, what are your thoughts here with you and Scott and Sir Crockett?
I'm not, I don't know that we'll get that detailed yet. We are, John has emailed out the timeline that you or one of your attorneys put together.
It was Chris.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that.
So we may, if there are questions about timeframes, generally we'll say, you know, here's a timeframe that you could look at to see when you would need to follow each of the steps by-
And I guess if there's specific questions, then I can help answer those in between the next meeting that we have.
Sure. Yeah, we can bring, if there are questions we can't answer, we'll bring those back. We're not, we're not going up there to provide a lot of detailed information. That meeting will take place once we have more data in April. So, yeah.
I think we were going to use Scott as our centerpiece on that because he's all-knowing.
Correct.
So on the financial side.
Yeah, I mean, I have ideas of the cost and I'm just about there on the data. I submitted our last entry, I think, to close the year now. We have to do some error checking and some proofing, you know, to make sure it's all right.
But we're about there. Welcome, welcome. Well, you can take the data from Plain City. That's what they did in the West Weaver one and said, you know, that's kind of the floor, you know? That's where you gotta look at and that will tell you what your taxes are going to look like and kind of where your your revenue needs to be. And if your revenue is a little short of that, your taxes will be a little higher. And if your revenue is a lot more than that, then your taxes will be a little lower. But you can almost point to that considering they just did it two years ago.
Yeah, I mean, that data, I mean, that study from two years ago, I mean, you can basically take whatever the total cost of municipal services is, minus their estimate, that's the-
Exactly. Right. Yeah, exactly. That's pretty simple to do.
Just depends on how they draw that footprint. So if they pick up the ski resorts, they have a lot more sales tax. And if they just pick up the floor, so that really will-
Well, if I was planning this, I'd want to pick up ski resort, wouldn't I? Wouldn't you?
Well, there's risks to it. I mean, yeah, if you want to get the sales tax, but then also, yeah, three big people that kind of control the fate of your incorporation. So it's a-
Lot more infrastructure too. Depends on which one they're going to pick up.
So-
There's two of them up there on that end.
Well, you got the three, right? You could potentially put all three in.
Really?
For me, just for me, if they take one, they take all three.
They do the entire province.
Yeah, or if they, you know, drew a map around from the border of the mountain all the way down and cut it off after Huntsville or up somewhere, you know, I mean, there's different ways they can draw it.
Pretty complicated to do that, but it becomes, you know, Huntsville in the middle of it who already is incorporated, you know?
Looking forward to seeing, seeing how they feel and our, what we hear initially is Huntsville wants to retain their identity as an incorporated area.
Yeah, we think they'd want it.
But when we worked with the Park District, we interlokal with them to help them with their park on a regional basis, meaning Liberty and Eden Park. And then if we put another one at the bottom of Trappers, Snow Basin Property, if there's a Chesapeake Park, but that interlocal agreement concept with Huntsville is already in play and that was working. And I would just anticipate that we would enhance that relationship between Huntsville and any entity that was up there so that regional solutions would be worked on together. And that's what I would encourage because it just promotes a more healthy environment community-wise. So you have a city that might surround Huntsville if that were the case. It's going to be interesting to see how that plays out. We'll, we'll see how the citizens up there want to respond to that.
Well, there we go.
Yep. So in a nutshell, that's it. But where else do you want to go with the discussion today?
I think it was just to introduce the fact that we are somewhat involved in this and make sure that from the commission perspective, that everyone's okay with that. Again, we're not, we're neutral on this. We're not saying one way or the other.
Well, you remain there. Just giving the information. I have no issue with that.
We are here to provide information.
Oh, you agree?
Absolutely. I've watched other, just done in other counties and the collaborative and cooperative effort. I've watched your team do, based on what I've heard come out of other counties, just shine so far above anything else I've seen. It's been great. And now we hear it at UAC and all that stuff. How, yeah, it's great. I'm proud of you. I mean, it's super proud of you.
The statute is quite specific for allocation of costs. And so the LG's office will take a large portion of those costs. If there's an election, the county will assist with that. If the incorporation is successful, there's a way for us to recruit.
Yeah, this just costs us money. But that's life, you know, it's not a ton. It's the cost of an election, basically. And that's just the way it is, you know?
Well, the cost will be, the cost will be prorated based on the number of people in that, whatever the possible district thing is.
But we'll pay for it unless it's successful.
Yeah, we pay, and we pay for the study.
That's right.
So-
I believe the LG's office-
I think you're right. They pay for the study.
They pay for the study? We don't have to reimburse them for that?
We facilitate the election.
They did that. That's what they did. They paid for the study out west.
Yes.
Okay.
People just didn't like or if you get the information, all that work that was put into the study out there, they, you know, I trust those guys down there too, you know, they're not very good.
Well, they hired it out, if you remember. They, they-
Out west?
They subbed it out of Science Bank.
Oh, that's right. And they're great.
Yeah, they were okay.
So I worked with Susie Becker at Wickstrom Economics, initially to do Hooper and Marriott Sladeville. Then she moved to Science Bank and she did the one out west also, and afterwards with three times.
She does good work there.
The two issues that I think will probably bubble up are one, control of decision-making. And that is a broad spectrum of decision-making, all sorts of different characteristics. So control is one thing. The other is having a good feel for the revenue and expense components of making it work and run as a city. And if they understand both of those things as thoroughly as they can, control over all the various aspects of decision-making and how the revenue and expense play out and getting comfortable with that and being okay with revenue and expense. Otherwise, it will be, we don't want change and we'll just stay with the county having decision-making. But we have influence over a little bit as, you know, as their body up there. We leave everything with the county. So they either want that control and they can live within the revenue expense or they'll leave it alone and just say, county, keep doing what you're doing.
So question for you, if I might, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So isn't Huntsville technically called a township?
No. A town.
It's a town.
Township is still under the control of the county. Township is under the control of the county. They can make advisory comments to the commissioners as a township, but the commissioners control the decision-making.
Okay, so they're a town.
But Huntsville is a town, not a township.
Huntsville is a town.
So no ship. Okay, I thank you.
Based on population.
Thank you. So this is-
And they have elected a mayor, right?
Right.
So-
And city council.
Right. And city council. So Huntsville Town has a mayor, city council. Is this application, so that I better understand it, it's to make a city or to increase the size of that town? I don't mean to be splitting hairs here, but I want to understand.
Well, I guess it could potentially involve Huntsville getting larger, but that, the intent that we have been given right now is to create a new city in Ogden Valley.
Okay, city, not town. Okay?
Town's under a thousand people, city's over a thousand. So there would have to be a city unless they created a bunch of different towns.
Okay.
And Huntsville loves that cultural identifier as a town, under a thousand people. And so they need sales tax order to maintain a good revenue source for their town, which is incorporated. But if they broke that thousand-person barrier, they become a city, lose that identifier as a town. But they then, like I said earlier, they would probably want to interlocal if there was a new city was formed up there with that new city on certain topics that they could work on together. And that's what I think is would be a good area to encourage is that if they do move forward, a city is incorporated, the Huntsville town and the new city cooperate in as many offered areas as possible so that it's together. So you get economies of scale, basically, snow plowing, taking care of roads, all that stuff.
We need all that stuff.
If you can work together, it goes a long way and you don't have double expenses for the same type of work.
Okay, next question is there previously, our master plan has identified, has identified village, not village nodes, correct?
Correct.
Those village nodes are where?
We have one in Nordic Valley. We have Old Town and New Town Eden. There was one over near Old Snow Basin Road, but that I understand is no longer.
Right. That's the one at the bottom of Old Snow Basin Road. That's not-
I believe there's one in Liberty as well.
Keep in mind, that, that village concept was put in with the committee's work in 2016 or '17.
As part of the general plan.
That wasn't generated from us. That was generated from the people, the GEM committee.
Kimball Wheatley.
Kim Wheatley that, that came together, put that together. So-
I remember his presentations back when I was-
We need to be clear that, you know, people come up now and say, hey, we don't like the village. Well, that was, that was talked about, voted on, put together by the community members up there six years ago.
That is the direction the general plan gives us right now.
Yeah. So, so if I can, if I can keep, keep on my thought on that, I agree with what you're saying. But so those, there were five village nodes up there.
Correct.
Now with the elimination of the one at the bottom of Old Snow Basin. So the four village nodes, if this all becomes a city, would they keep those village nodes or would the city be able to do what they want?
City will do what they want. At that point, the county loses all control, zoning or anything.
Okay, so if I have property in Liberty is, and it now becomes a city
Yes.
and my property had this, this, this on it, and now all of a sudden the city can come and change the rules and my property could change value up or down depending on what the city did, right?
My understanding, and Chris, you can correct me, my understanding is that the zoning that's in place initially transfers over and then the city can do what it wants after that point.
Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a statute on there. We'd have to look to see if that zoning transfer is over, there's going to be a period of time that they be vested under the old law.
Correct. So, and I don't know how-
Vested her grandfather? Okay. I just, if I, like I say, if I own property in Liberty and I was going to do this or this or this, whatever my zoning was, I just, I would like to still be able, my kids be able to still do that. But maybe that's just how government works. I don't know.
Right. It's just an issue of timing.
Okay.
I thought there was something in statute that said in the vision of incorporation that existing zoning couldn't be taken away, at least initially.
I don't know. I mean-
It could be something in there. Let me, let me there.
I'm just trying to understand.
I don't know.
But you know, that's what this is all about in many cases. Many of the folks up there don't like the direction the county's going and they want to control it more. So they're deciding to incorporate.
Yeah.
Well, we're doing is what they told us before.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, we're following the plan they gave us six years ago. I guess if they want to change it again, that's, you know, it's hard to them.
Is there one or two messages that you'd like us to take tonight or just be open-minded and see what type of questions arise?
I think the best thing is, is say, hey, look, you know, for me, messaging is important. This is the plan that we received from, from five or six or seven years ago. This is what, we, we've just been following that plan and is there a new direction from that plan? This is what was in, in place. Do you want to go to that?
No, no. JB and, no, as far as I've told these guys, at least my position, my position is, and I think we take the same position we did out west, is we're not taking a position pro or con.
Correct.
Right.
So I don't, and yeah, I just think we let them, but I just want the information passed on and we're not going to have any financial information.
Not yet. Right. That comes later.
Well, where places where West Weaver just did this, we were talking as you walked in, you could almost take the dollar figures out and plug their dollar figures in and it'd be somewhat accurate.
Probably, yeah. I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that a bit.
At least they'd have something to shoot at.
Yeah. I think from what we've been told, they'd rather wait a little bit, get, get the accurate data that we have from last year and then we can start looking.
Who's they? The people trying to-
Correct.
When you say the accurate data from last year, what are you talking about?
Sales tax numbers.
Okay.
That information.
Yeah, nobody cares about that.
I agree with that.
I'll find out the answer for you and send you a mail.
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
All right. Well, I don't think there's any pushback here, John.
Okay.
No.
We'll give you some responses.
Yeah. I'm not sure we need any response, feedback a little, but yeah. Yeah. Good.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, this is out of our court and-
I agree with that.
See what, it's up to the citizens up there to decide. Then they can look at the numbers. It's going to come out very similar to what we saw out west and based upon what the property tax goes up or where that happens, people, people will vote on their doll, you know, in their pocketbooks.
I, with all due respect, Commissioner Forre, I think similar with an updated cost factor to it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, because that, you know, we're going on, the costs have gone up so much in everything. It'll all be proportionate.
And to, to be clear, the county's role is not to give data that will be relied on for their ultimate decisions.
That's the lieutenant governor.
That is hired by the-
That's the lieutenant governor.
That's the document similar, well, it'll be similar to this one.
Yeah, that's the finance plan.
That's exactly right.
That's what they have to rely on ultimately at the end of the day, but we can give them information that gets them into a ballpark that is helpful at this point in time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, you know, for me, then the city can work on their own water department, sewer department. Could help bring some, solves those big issues and they can factor in all that other stuff as far as protecting the ultimate water source up there and anything else. That'd be great.
I appreciate your input.
I'm good.
That's how we have to report.
So you know, when you, that comment you just made, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Actually, there'll be a fair amount of the county that's left outside this incorporation.
How do we know?
Well, well, you're right. At this point, we don't, but I'm assuming that that generally is what happens. And I agree with what you kind of said there. It'd be nice if they could take everything we could so that we had less to do up there.
Listen, with all due respect, I've been listening and learning from you with all this experience that you've had for years. Our job really is to get rid of the unincorporated areas of Weaver County. If we can help facilitate that in the city. Happy day. That, that, that we become more like a Davis County where it's all-
Yeah. And that'd be- If they end up doing Eden and not Liberty, you know?
If they end up, hold on, doing Eden and not Liberty.
Yeah, we'll still have the north end of the valley.
That still takes, that puts additional expense. There'll be a factor on the county because we're now servicing fewer people, but with still the same mileage and everything. I mean, that's a lot.
It'd be nice if they did, if Huntsville would go east all the way to the mouth of the canyon.
Huntsville town. Well, my, in discussions I've had with people in Huntsville, I don't expect that they're going to expand too. They want to keep it at, you know, at least their current environment. They want to keep it a thousand or below. They want to stay a town.
Oh, do they?
They're not interested in being-
Didn't know that.
So they've got, they've been, you know, they've taken a little bit there on the east side of the highway.
But they kind of want to stay small.
They, the information I'm getting back from the people I've talked to is they don't want to go over a thousand people. They, they really like the town.
Yeah.
And I think most of the residents of the town support that. So, but you know, what I-
That's not likely to change.
I don't think that's going to change. But again, what I get concerned about, and then we have to look back at the law, is that we don't, you know, this, this map that comes out shouldn't create areas, you know, basically islands. And that's addressed in the statutes. We don't have to-
It has to be contiguous.
But yeah, it's got to be contiguous. So we don't want to have a liberty left out where we have to drive through a city with, especially going up Ogden Canyon or-
No, that's, I agree.
That's brings additional burden on the county taxpayer down here.
I agree it does. But you know, as well as I do, it's going to be hard if they want Eden to incorporate. It's going to be, and don't want to take Liberty. It's not like we have the ability to push them together.
When we worked on this with the Park District, they thought initially Eden and Liberty Park would join together and then discussions matured further to incorporate the entire floor to the Eagles Camp. You know what I'm talking about? Past the monastery. And then it matured further to just simply incorporate up to the boundaries of the counties, which then is what ultimately happened was the Park District, they gathered in everything. And so as these discussions go on with the citizens up there, they're going to have to decide whether to stay here in a small area around Huntsville, Eden Gap, Liberty, or whether to reach out to the three ski resorts, stop at Eagles Camp, or then further all the way up to Ants Flat, you know, up to the boundaries of the county. And so all of those pockets where areas need to be discussed and managed to figure out how they're going to proceed. And I think at that point, discussions with commissioners on how to manage services in areas that are not assumed to be part of the initial footprint, true, would be helpful. And that's what we're going to encourage is helpful dialogue about how to manage big pockets like that.
So until that map comes out, I look at the numbers, you know, it's going to be what it is.
I still am just trying to understand, you know, from the marketing side of it. You know, since being here, all I've heard is we don't want to be like Park City. The first thing I'm hearing now is we're going to make it a city and not a town. You just said that.
Based on population.
They'll be halfway there because they're going to call whatever it is a city. Right now, it's not a city. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. I don't get it. I don't understand.
Something they keep in mind with this too is that with the last incorporation petition, there was a big battle with Plain City, with a competing annexation petition. The law changed as a result of that, to be a good example. And now it's basically who files first.
I'm trying. I don't, we're not going to have the same issue up there. Nope. Again, Huntsville's not going to get in that battle. They're good, they're good smart people everywhere. We're good.
All right, folks. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Good luck to you, Mike.
Have fun tonight.
Sheriff should be out there.
Before you leave tonight.
Nice, nice to see you here. Thank you.
You know Jen?
I do know Jen. I like Jen. She's from Pennsylvania, if I remember correctly, right?
Yes.
What, can you tell us the time and place of that meeting?
Seven o'clock.
Eden Bowery.
Eden Bowery, seven o'clock. Could be snowing.
Let's hope.
Yeah.
Let's hope.
That'd be great.
Eden Bowery, seven o'clock. JB's got boots.
I got gloves. Okay, so good.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, guys.
Sheriff should be out there.
I don't see the sheriff.
Okay. I shout the sheriff. So I shoot the deputy. Did you see? I was talking to Randy Elliott.
Oh.
About their convention.
What happened out there?
Oh, man, he said their convention was as bad and as raucous as he's ever seen it.
I've heard. Ours wasn't good. Well, you saw that Steve Handy got beat.
Yeah, Steve Handy got beat, but other things crazy. So Lorraine, she's got a primary.
Lorraine?
Does she?
And with Mark Shepard.
Where's Shepard?
Well, so Bob, Mark was out of town. He-
Who was?
Mark Shepard.
Oh, Mark Shepard. Oh.
So Bob went downstairs and registered him and paid his fee.
That makes, that'd make for good relations within your commission, wouldn't it?
Wow.
Well, of course, Lorraine, she hears about it just like that.
Yeah.
And so what, what do you say? He's pushing her or he's pushing Mark Shepard.
He's pushing Mark. Well, I don't, that doesn't surprise me. I mean-
Well, I'm just telling you, boy.
But that's pretty, yeah.
That's what a rotten thing to do.
But I, yeah, I mean, who would do that?
Yeah, right. Well, of course, we know some people that would do. But it has created some really, really hard feelings there right now. Lorraine wouldn't hurt a fly.
I know.
She's so nice.
That's too bad.
It is too bad.
That just doesn't make for good working relationships.
Tim Harvey?
And at the end of the day, the public's, they're the one that ends up on the short end of this case because those guys aren't getting along.
Better take full advantage of it.
I hadn't heard that.
Well, anyway, yeah.
Yeah.
I was surprised.
Oh, and Curtis Tope.
Who?
Curtis Tope's going to-
Well, I think he got almost every-
Ricky Hatch down there.
Every one of their guys are going to a primary.
Really?
Yeah. They, Randy talked about how they were just, they're mad at everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what's happening.
Hey, right on, Mike. What up?
All right.
Love what you've done.
All my air.
Do you?
Wait, is that what that is?
Yeah. Yeah, that's interesting. So there, a lot of those guys go to a primary as well.
Yeah. Yeah, he said they booed the mayor or the governor.
They booed him?
Oh, yeah, because he-
Because of that transgender.
Yeah, what'd he do? He-
He told it.
He told it.
And then they had to go back and all the way around.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I agree. I told Mike Mara, I said, if he comes out here, they start booing him, I'm going to stand up and boo.
Yeah.
Don't you do that, Jenkins. He said, don't you do that.
Why not?
That's pretty good.
All right.
Hey.
Lieutenant Warden, you're up.
Yes, sir.
Good. MOU Sheriff's Office, what's this all about? Mike, why don't you shut that door? You're the last one in.
We're expanding our drone program and we're started, we're going to start patrolling the Weaver County Sheriff's Office by drone.
The office by drone?
Yep, correct. This will fall under directions.
They're going to go down the hallways?
No, around on the proper.
So it's outside?
Outside.
Where's your nest going to be?
Haven't got it yet. I talked to you about that.
Good.
EJ, EJI released it, the product last Monday.
Right on.
And it's awesome.
That's fantastic. Of course they did. And they'll just take the whole, they'll end up taking whole, all the markets.
The first one is going to Motorola so they can put their programming into it. Weaver County is wanting to get the second one on production.
And I know right where it can be nested. I've got power there already. By the way, just in case you want to know.
Yeah. So, but we reached out to Weaver Valley Human Service, Weaver Valley Youth Detention next door. And so we're signing an MOU within that-
Scott, you know that, you've-
Yeah, I've been there, so-
No, hold on, let's clarify.
Oh, Mill Creek. Yeah, the old Mill Creek.
Yeah.
But yeah, well, we're signing, we're signing an MOU to patrol their property.
I've been there many times.
So that's what this is tomorrow. So we'll be signing an MOU to patrol their property as well. And all their party on board has signed their documentation.
Listen, commissioners, as far as I'm concerned, I'm a hundred percent on board with any drone stuff we can do.
Did you see the arrests we got over the weekend?
No.
Watch ABC Four tonight.
Really? What did you do?
They had a chase. Deputy was pulling in the sheriff's office Friday night and saw a car that looked out of place. Found out it was stolen, got in a small chase. They crashed out by commercial tire and took off without-
Commercial tires, the old one, 12th Street, right?
No, the one on 21st.
Okay.
21st Street.
And threw a drone up and caught one of the kids in a few minutes. And then about 20 minutes later, they caught the second kid with the drone.
You know what? That word's going to spread like crazy.
It's already like, not the-
Inside the, inside the jail, you know what I mean?
It was really cool to watch the video because you could see the deputy searching this yard here. And then you see the kid belly crawling through this yard on the drone. And so all the deputies running over here, got him. They come back for a battery swap, threw it up, and then you can see the other kid hiding a couple of yards over between two sheds. They come back for a battery swap, threw it up, and then you can see the other kid hiding a couple yards over between two sheds.
The battery's just gonna get better and better.
Two fourteen year olds. And these are little drones.
Fourteen year olds, really?
We have a theory, we've had it for a couple of years, that the gangs in Ogden are using kids to steal the cars, because they know if they get caught with the stolen car, it's a slap on the wrist and they'll be out the next day. So.
Well, I see where these kids, uh, that kid, uh, driving that, uh, car over the weekend in Salt Lake that was going the wrong direction on One Way, he was fourteen.
Yeah.
So.
It's just gone nuts.
I, I, it was a couple of years ago, I, I caught two kids, we caught them in a stolen car after they crashed up at McKay Hospital, one of them broke her ankle. The next night, the other girl in the car was out stealing cars again, because they're two.
Really?
Here's a thermal imaging of the one Friday night from the drone.
Uh, it's pretty good, Gabe. You know, I don't know, I don't know what I'm saying here. I don't know what I'm saying.
That's pretty good.
These vacant offices.
I think those drones save us a lot.
It's pretty cool, um.
Yeah.
That's so.
Well, what happens is in a situation like this, where you get one of them, and of course you have to work on that one, sometimes you lose the other because you, you don't know where they're at and.
Well, our, these are, these drones aren't that big, but they have that thermal capability. We have a drone on twenty-four seven now in a patrol vehicle.
So cool.
So that deputy was working, he responded to the incident, and soon as he heard they crashed, he threw the drone up and started looking.
Good for you.
Well, that's pretty cool.
That's fantastic.
Pretty awesome, huh?
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Great.
Good for you, Mark.
So are these drones in the car out there now, or are they coming out of the sheriff's office, or how are you getting them to the location?
They're in a patrol car. We have the pilots, we have about seven or eight pilots now. And they're sworn deputies, they're deputies first, we put them through the training for the drone, and we have two drones for assigned to patrol. And so day shift shares with day shift and grave shares, shares with grave, but they'll check it in at my office, they'll plug it in, and then the next guy for the next shift come, picks it up, puts it in his car.
Great.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. You know, you don't have to pay the drone overtime, sick leave, vacation.
But, and the thing we're trying to stress is, you don't know how awesome it is for the officers responding to these incidents to know what's going on before they walk into the incident.
That's so cool.
They know.
The confidence it's gotta give them.
The confidence and i- it's kinda like a backup. And so.
With reliable eyes.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
So, yeah, so tomorrow's agreement with us and, uh, Weaver Valley Youth Detention to start patrolling their property as well, so.
We have the money and the budget to cover it.
There's no money involved, we're not paying the drone overtime.
Perfect.
That work?
Great job.
Okay, you guys anything else for me?
Nope.
Got it covered.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Good luck.
All right, looks good. Hey, you ever get one of those stuck in a tree?
Yeah.
You know who to call?
Yeah, we'll call you.
OPD's already called us.
Yeah.
Has it? Got one of the cotton tree, huh?
Yeah, one of the pilots.
Thank you. All right, thanks. All right, Mike's here to talk to you about paramedic coverage.
Wonderful, thank you for putting it on the agenda.
Yeah, well, I got a, we met sometime ago, I'm kinda kicked him loose in the start in this. And, uh, I got a call from, uh, a member of Northview's board the other night, and they wanted to know how far along it was, and I couldn't remember.
You called me.
Yeah, so anyway, got hold of Mike, and he says, ah, let's talk where we're at right now.
Great.
So we thought we'd spend a little time on that.
Great, um, it's, the timing's perfect. Um, I'd sat down with Lisa and Eli and helped them with the, uh, specifics of the request for proposal, which gave it to them, and as of today.
Okay, well, so now kinda update is how we got to this point.
Okay, how we got to this was that in the past, all the discussions about the paramedic service delivery program has been, do we have sufficient trucks, do we have sufficient coverage, how are we doing with density? We added a truck back in like fourteen, fifteen out in the northwest part of the county, Station sixty-one. And, um, uh, we wanted to kind of evaluate what's the effects of that? How's it affected our ability to cover? How's it affected call density? Cuz the two things that kind of affect this, the concerns that you would have as policymakers are, how we're, how well are we providing adequate coverage? How well are we providing average coverage with the density in mind? What I mean by that is, I can show you a map that we did back in fourteen that talks about whether or not we should add a truck out of sixty-one or move it on from downtown out there. Well, and this study that we commissioned really quick shows, and I can just illustrate this map, is with the, all the current units we have in the county now, those different colors represent where those units can get within eight minutes. Now, that's given if they're at their stations and then the typical travel time.
So they're not out somewhere else.
Right, and they're not busy. What we don't know, the, the answer to the, the difficult question now is now that call volume's grown, population's grown, how are we doing with what they call convergent, or excuse me, concurrency and call density? What I mean by that is if the truck in Roy has to respond to Pleasant View, it's way beyond the eight minute time. And how often is it that all the other closer trucks are busy and we're not able to provide adequate service to that area? So the study's gonna not only incorporate the coverage in terms of if they're all available, but now look at call density and overlay that, and look at how often and where are we not concurrently taken care of? Or the backup unit, say, the backup unit up in the south end of Ogden, how often does it have to come into downtown Ogden? Cuz the one in downtown Ogden is busy. The one in Roy, how often does it have to leave Roy to come into South Ogden or the southeast section of Ogden? Because the truck up there is busy. And so how well are we backing each other up? And so that's one of the analysis's that have to occur. And that way it helps you in terms of planning to say, do we need growth? And if we need it, where do we need it? And that's what this study hopes to answer. We've asked within the response, or within the configuration of the document, to analyze the current call volume, the current call density, our current ability to cover, then give us a three-year and a six-year, uh, projected strategic plan that says if and when this happens, we should add an additional unit and where. So you have a roadmap, rather than just a suggestion or, or a concern brought up from various people within the community, that says we think it'd be a good idea to do this or do that. This way, it's a little, little bit more strategic, and it gives you a roadmap for future planning to where you balance cost and efficiency and effectiveness with decision making. And so the RFP attempts to do that, it's, I just got a text from Mike Slater, I was just, uh, texting him back, and he said that Jason believes he has it ready to go out today, this afternoon, it should be released.
Well, the RFP is for somebody to do this study.
Right, right.
Okay.
And we've got a rating sheet, the rating sheet will look at qualifications, uh, cost, uh, their expertise and technical, uh, capability, their reference checks on what they've done to similar studies like this. So then we'll rate them what was suggested by Eli and Lisa, and I think Jason was to get a representative from the three paramedic providers you currently have, Weaver, Ogden, Roy, then also ask for a representative from Northview, and then possibly they were suggesting, uh, I think, I believe Tom Hanson, the city manager from Washington Terrace. So they could all look at it, and they would be the ones that would look at the criteria to help select the vendor. And then once the work is being done and drafted and so forth, it'll start coming back to you guys for review and ask for, you know, qual-, uh, for modifications.
I think Tom's the perfect guy there, because it splits Riverdale and South Ogden, and, and he's pretty, you know, he's got some experience, and that's a great idea. You know, one of the problems you have in this is if you put a, uh, unit out in Roy, and they get called to, uh, back up in Pleasant View, they're so far away that if you then have another issue in Roy, the distance from any other bu- person to get there is so long and so, uh, you know, you almost get to a point where certain areas you wanna say, look, that unit can't back up, it's just too far away.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and this fire does that too, Lil.
Right, and sometimes we do do that. If, if a, an ambulance out there in Northview area might pick up the patient and say, we're headed to the hospital, we'll meet you, but we're not gonna wait for you.
Right.
And so there's that kind of on-the-fly decision-making that'll occur. If they're ready to transport, they'll go. If they're not ready to transport, say it's a prolonged extrication, then they won't. So it's all situation, and then you also have air ambulances in the remote areas.
And which are getting more popular.
Right.
Somebody told me that, uh, they've been serviced more by air now than they are by, by vehicle.
I think in Snow Basin, didn't Tina tell us, yesterday, they flew twice on Saturday out of Snow Basin.
Well, they did one yesterday afternoon.
Oh, did Tina?
Yeah.
She told, yeah, that's exactly what it was.
Yeah, I think, I think one, I think the one yesterday was actually a auto bicycle accident.
Oh, is that?
There was two of them, there was one, I think, somewhere near Snow Basin and one near North Ogden, Dubai, that were auto bike accidents.
Well, what I'm talking about is at the basin, cuz I was up there.
If they're at the basin, they're probably ski accidents, but.
No, I, it was on the road, it.
Oh, was it?
Because I, it looked to me, there wasn't a damaged car there.
Could've been a bike in a ditch.
So.
They, yeah.
I know they helicoptered somebody out.
Yeah, they had two auto bikes, and I know one of the auto bikes they called the helicopter for. So, yeah, it's, it's more prevalent, so we have one at McKay and one at Ogden Regional, if they're there.
That drives the car, so.
Yes, it does, unfortunately, but that's why I think, you know, people in the streets need to make those decisions conscientiously, they make a difference.
Time, timewise, I mean, you have somebody that, that's best way to get them there.
Yeah.
Coming from Snow Basin down to either one of those hospitals, you're probably, depending on traffic, an easy twenty, thirty minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe more.
Right.
Um, excuse me. It's seventeen to my doorstep, so it's another, uh, it's another five minutes to Ogden region. And if they're coming down out of, they can come up the toll road, so I would guess it's probably twenty minutes to Ogden Regional.
Yeah.
From, from, wait, that's from the parking lot of Snow Basin, that's once you leave.
Mm-hmm. Well, we just wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with having this study and doing this stuff.
Yeah, so do we have a cost?
Not yet, not until they submit their proposals, and that, that'll be part of the analysis of the potential vendors.
Okay.
And that'll be.
You have any idea, I mean.
Well.
This is probably not a new study.
No, the, what they'll, what they'll hopefully do is pull the data from the nine-one-one center.
Yeah.
And, and do some GIS mapping and stuff. I'm hoping less than fifty thousand, but I'm hoping in the thirty thousand, but I.
Yeah, I would think fifteen or twenty.
I was hoping, but.
Well, that's, that initial thought was twenty to thirty thousand, I would.
I think, then what was the budget number, were you?
I think we used around thirty as a budget number.
Yeah, I, I think we did in our budget. I think with thirty, that's, but I just see stuff, someone else go about fifty.
Yeah, we, the, the only reference I have is Ogden City Council did a management audit on the fire department back in oh-seven, and it was around sixty-five thousand, but it was comprehensive, it was the entire department and all the standards of coverage. And then I think we spent five thousand on this recent one, just, this was back in fifteen, that, that just got the updated information, but they just used GIS information and location of station and then, you know, time.
Simple.
Yeah, pretty simple.
No, I'm, I'm for the study, I think that's good.
Right.
I'd like to have that information.
I'd like, actually, I'd like you to say something, uh, at Wakeup too. Hey, we're going ahead with this study.
Okay.
About, I think that would be appropriate, let all the mayors know, hey, look, so they can let their fire guys know if they have them.
Yeah, good point.
And just say, this is what we're doing, we're already in the middle of this, and so you know, I think it would be valuable. Well, so, the one that's really pushed us over the edge is Northview right there. They want a unit up there, and it's like, look, uh, you might be funding this yourself, if you want a unit up there.
Yeah.
Because we gotta decide where the data tells us that we wanna use.
This is why this is gonna be deadly.
Yeah.
It's gonna say, okay, the, the first one could be Northview, but it could be South Ogden, it could be Hooper. We don't know, it could be in, it could be the top of Powder Mountain, we've got no idea.
And I think that's what's important, let the data drive.
Yeah.
Right.
Make decisions based on what you need.
Drive it.
Yeah, and, and, and if we need to adjust and move any of the existing units, we can always talk about that, they're not like cemented in anyway.
That's right. Yeah, maybe, and they may come up hopefully, look at clients saying, look, we suggest you keep units in this, these locations based upon those density units they're gonna see.
Right, and what we did, what I did limit this to Commissioner, just because you live in that, I, I, I didn't include the Upper Valleys, I didn't think it was warranted to tell us what we already kinda know.
Yeah, I think we know enough up there.
Yeah, that we don't need them to tell us that there's something, anything.
We know in the summer it's Pine View, in the winter it's Two Skiers.
Exactly, and there's a lot of geographical area. Yeah, and there's a lot of geographical area.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's limited, it's somewhat rural, but when you're looking at urbanized area and, and doing the most good for the most numbers, you look at distribution and density for that particular.
Mike, I'd just be curious, and it's not for today, but I would like to know the call frequency to our two parks up at Memorial by Cosi, and also the North Fork Park.
During the summer months and stuff.
We're not gonna see much, although North Fork's really picked up with fat bikes and cross-country skiing. But I don't imagine, I mean, there's gonna be an occasional what happens up there, but just kinda keep an eye. The only reason I'm, we're saying that now is even since we started this, usage at our parks, parks have gone off the charts. Off the chart. We're over a thousand percent. Uh, re- remember that figure we talked about two years ago, so before COVID, so in two thousand nineteen, in the month of May, we did sixty-seven hundred dollars in camping reservations at North Fork Park. In May of twenty twenty, we did sixty-three thousand. That's, and you said that's almost a thousand percent, and it is, that's, that's the difference.
Yeah.
So it's just changed so much.
Yeah, utilization rates. Yep, it is, but yeah, and we're, we just wanna get you the data, so it doesn't become a political decision, it becomes a data-driven decision.
Perfect, we agree with that.
You know, best paramedic service we can provide as a, as a county, and, and I can tell you that, um, if we can stay on this path, we, we're an example for everybody else to look at. If you look at what just happened in Davis County with the political decision to take paramedic service out of the sheriff's office and.
Yeah.
Push it down locally, where every fire department decided they had to have a unit. And the costs go up, the call volume per unit goes down, paramedicine practice goes down, expertise goes down. Um, the other person I would suggest involve in this is our physician advisor, which he works for you under contract as our paramedic physician advisor, so he can have any kind of independent viewpoint from a physician standpoint of what makes sense, because.
Who is that?
Uh, Dr. Bob Grove out of Ogden Regional, he has an assistant, Dr. Ben Seal out of McKay Hospital, so we have really two that help us, but, uh, Dr. Grove's the lead. But, um, he very much understands competency issues, skill set, and making sure we have call volume, because I can show you on this map why and how sixty-one needed to go in, the one out in northwest part of the county, cuz none of us could provide the decent response time, even though call density wasn't significant out there, it was a hole in our service area. Um, but the call volume still hasn't grown enough to where they're doing it often enough to where it can really provide an environment where skill, competency, and knowledge and stuff, it's experienced so much that, that they're really, um, getting well, well exposed. Um, I'm still talking with Paul and Mike Slater and Brett, we're talking about maybe reincarnating our rotation program[1620.11] just so we can kind of rotate some busier unit paramedics into some lesser unit areas and.
Probably give them the training they need.
Mm-hmm. It has nothing to do with who's doing it in a department or some person. It's just exposure, simply exposure.
Right.
That's why they, that's why they call it a practice.
Right. Out of Northview, that has everything to do with who's doing it. You know, those, they're fighting for their citizens and they believe they need and want.
Right.
They're ready out there.
Right. One, and one thing you should.
You know, just that simple.
Yeah, one thing you should keep in mind, and we supported them in this, is that there's really two types of paramedic service now in Weaver County. The field nine-one-one paramedic and the inter-facility paramedic or advanced life support. Ogden does the inter-facility paramedic with a license that they hold on their ambulance for Ogden Regional and McKay Hospital. Roy does it for an ER out in West Roy. Northview wanted to do it for the Pleasant View ED. We used to do it with our paramedic rescue units riding on our ambulances. And one of the things that helped the paramedic service delivery program was to alleviate the field paramedics or the nine-one-one paramedics on these rescue units going and doing these inter-facility ER transfers. And so, we're not doing that. And Northview has hired a paramedic per day to do those inter-facility. And that's what they were hired for. And oftentimes they'll say, well, we need experience and exposure for those paramedics. Well, they were hired to do inter-facility work, not to do, not replace the field paramedic work. So there's a little bit of interpretation of this duplication of effort in an area.
When you get one and then they say, that's good. They want them to be here too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They want them to do something else that they weren't originally told. They didn't tell us that's what they hired.
Right.
So.
Well, so I got plenty of time for you today. How's paramedic program running?
I think rather well. I, I, I can tell you a couple of things. Um, one of the things we're having challenges with, and others have started to address it. If you, last February, Roy City Council went and addressed their compensation system because it was woefully undermarket. And we, we unfortunately are currently undermarket in Ogden City and will be addressing it in Ogden City. Uh, the mayor and Mark are well aware of this, and we'll be talking to our city council about that.
So that'll be a new budget.
Yeah.
On that July first.
And there, there's, so there's some market pressures out there.
All right.
Just like you've seen with the sheriff's office, public safety everywhere, we're all dealing with those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Um, but the complexity of paramedicine is just going up. The need to have great quality paramedics that know what they're doing is never been more important. And so, we need to stay on that. And that's why it's.
Plus, you guys got a lot of fancy equipment that you didn't used to have.
Right.
They got it, they got it to be able to run all that.
Right. And it's, it's a lot more sophisticated when I was in the street. And so, I've seen how that's changed. And so, it's really important to have well-trained paramedics that are very skilled at what they do.
Absolutely.
And they do it by practicing it, not by, you know, they joke around in some communities where they have one on every street corner and go on one or two calls a day. That does not allow for you to maintain your skills.
You know Don Weston?
Mm-hmm.
It's interesting. He retired when old and, well, today, a year or two later, Don Weston's up in the ER of McKay Hospital as a paramedic. Because they are not used to doing up there what field paramedics are new.
Yeah. Same thing like with security. A lot of the retired police officers work at the hospital because they're used to dealing with unruly people.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyway, it, it's just really odd that he'd be up there. And I said, do you like that? He goes, he says, it's a lot different, but he says, a lot more kids. He said, I'm dealing with kids up there. They come in, they're OD and stuff like that.
Oh, boy.
But, uh, he said, I'm not riding around in a truck. And he says, this, yeah, I said, I like it up here.
He's not getting woke up at four in the morning.
That's right. That's exactly right, yeah. Oh, anyway.
The guys, you know, it's funny, but I know a couple of guys that are doctors who just said, you know, I'm done. I'm gonna go work in the ER. And they just then quit their practice, went to work in the ER because they had a set schedule. They, you know, like just handled it as they came in. And then they went home. And that was.
They're not on call.
They're not on call?
Yeah. That's big for those docs too.
Yeah, something to be said about that.
Yeah.
It is. So, uh, uh, as far as the budget, this heavy rescue that we decided to fund out of it.
Mm-hmm.
Has not overly hurt you?
Not yet. And.
Right.
Reason I say.
Now watch it.
Right, because the fund balance has been healthy.
Right.
But, uh, one day, the projected year finance folks kind of said, it could be three to five years, and maybe I'm off on the timing, so don't quote me on that. You may want to get scolded.
It was longer than that.
Yeah, maybe seven years, something before.
You got a pretty healthy fund balance.
Right.
It is.
But, but I think the key, the, the thing to be important is, is that we as providers will come back to you. There's, here's a trickle-down effect. We raise our rate wages to become more competitive. We're gonna come back to you to say we need to increase the contracts.
That's why I brought that up.
Right.
Because if you have to raise wages that bad, you know, we have a little extra revenue going in there that we didn't have before too, because of growth.
Because of growth, yeah.
But if, if your budget has to increase, which you will.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you're right.
Right, so.
That's gonna change.
Keeping the mouse you currently have that, before you start adding more, that you've got to be careful of that.
Yeah.
So, there's gonna be some pressures because as we raise our wages and Roy did theirs, we will have to do theirs in these contracts.
Well, if we decide to go to another unit or two, you know, that's all funded through this program.
I know.
So that'll be, uh, that will take that down. And of course, that's one of the reasons these other units, they want a unit there because they're saying, well, we don't have to, we're already paying for something. We, we think it's time for us to have it. And, uh, you know, we're not.
Yeah, I agree. Well, that's what the study should show us.
Yeah, you're right. Gage, you're right. Are they receiving the service or not?
Yeah, yeah.
Study should show that, shouldn't it?
I'd like to give Mr. Chair like water. I'd like to, I'd like to be able to save some money, like the water district. They're not gonna give us water, but they're still gonna charge us the money. So let's just not get the fire and police service to still charge us the money.
How that goes. That was about that.
Yeah, not happy about that. But there's, what else do you do?
Yeah.
If I click that red, does that just move that away?
Just closes that, yeah. Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Don't hand that to me and let me monkey around with it.
I don't know. I'm scared. I give this kind of stuff to you. He won't, he won't give it back.
No. He's the IT.
All right, Mike. Well, that sounds really good. I'm very happy with that.
Okay, and hopefully Lee, Lee and Eli will keep you posted on the ongoing to the study and when they get the vendor selected and then get the work started.
Thanks for doing it, Mike.
Should go out golfing then.
Yeah, did yesterday and Saturday. That was good weather.
Oh, it was good night weather.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, we're gonna.
How's that new club you got?
Is that?
Yeah, if I, if I use it right. There's always that thing between the ears.
You know, I want you to know, I didn't hear about it.
It's not all about the club then, it's what you're telling me. Sometimes it's about the person running.
Yeah, sometimes.
I've heard that.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, you guys.
All right, well, we're a half hour ahead here.
Motion to saunter for thirty minutes.
Second. Okay, I'll turn aside.
All right, we're gonna saunter for thirty minutes. Say that again.
All right, everybody. We'll be back at two-thirty.
A little both ways.
We find ourselves back in session. We took a little bit of a break because we got done early. So this is our two thirty. Discussion regarding Pineview improvements restricted fund reporting Jennifer.
Jennifer's here. Thanks for doing this. This is.
Yeah, we appreciate it, Jim.
You bet. Well, I can actually see that Nick Smith is on our Zoom call and Nick is with the. Hi there. Nick is with the Utah Recreation Company and he's actually.
He's part of URC?
Yes.
Right on, Nick.
Nick is actually the one that reached out to me to say, hey, in our contract, we say that in a public meeting, we'll discuss. How the restricted fund is being used. And so I told Nick, you're right. Let me get that on the agenda and we'll get that done.
Great. All right. Time's yours, Jennifer.
Okay, so.
Or Nick, whoever you whatever you're gonna have happen here.
Yeah, so we have the two thousand nineteen, twenty and twenty-one collections are.
Nineteen, twenty and twenty-one.
Yep, we've been doing this three years now. So so far, the the total that's been collected, and this is going to be reported to you in the. Two dollars and eighty cents per unit, which is the three dot, if they collect three dollars, but if we back the taxes out, that's where we get the two eighty. There's been.
This is on the parking fee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Launch parking.
Yeah.
There has been collected, we're just shy, or Utah Recreation Company is just shy of collecting two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Of that, they have taken a sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollar administrative fee, which has left. Three hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars to be distributed between the county and Huntsville City.
Now Huntsville gets a good portion of that though.
Huntsville does get a good portion of that because of Cemetery Point.
Right. So what's that three hundred thousand? How much does? So I know when I was, when I, that first year, like a chick had come in for seventy, eighty thousand Huntsville would get almost eighty, ninety percent of that.
You're right. So of the three hundred and eighteen, five all rounded, three hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred. The county has had seventy-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. And Huntsville City has received two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. But of that two hundred and forty-one that Huntsville City did receive in two thousand and twenty, if you remember Commissioner Far. They remitted a check back to the county of twenty-four thousand dollars as a donation toward their restricted fund.
Correct.
Correct.
So so far, in two thousand and nineteen, we did not have any expenses come out of the fund. In two thousand and twenty, we we paid for a little bit of waste management. Just, just over eight hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty. But in two thousand and twenty-one, we had. We got them there for the full season and we added dumpsters, if you recall. So we spent.
Well, we do get a little grading done by Joe just in front of.
Additionally, but these are just, she's just talking dumpsters. But yes, you're right.
Yeah, we did. So there's a little expense there.
The grading was causing them.
Well, we did a little on that other parking lot over there.
That's right.
On Middle Inlet?
Was a ton.
Did you do any at Pelican too?
I can't remember that.
Well, we didn't put the dumpsters at Pelican.
No, Middle, Middle.
Okay.
So we spent, Waste Management, the company Waste Management, we spent fifty-nine hundred, excuse me, just over fifty-three hundred, fifty-three oh nine. In two thousand and twenty-one and on porta pots, we added porta pots in twenty twenty-one. So there was just over twelve hundred dollars in porta pots. So if you take the seventy-seven thousand, four hundred that I said we received from Utah, I keep calling them Utah Retirement, but it's Utah Recreation Company.
Nick, you're retired already. Way to go.
It's that you are, and then I get confused. And you add the twenty-four thousand that the city gave us minus our expenses. Our fund balance for that restricted fund is ninety-four thousand, eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll tell you, if I can interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll tell you, I think, I know we even had to increase the amount of service times to those garbage cans. Not only did we add more. But we also started doubling the service times, right, Jennifer?
Yes, we did.
Because we were, just to be responsible, something we didn't have to do statutorily, but we just did. And I think this, that's a good. To have those garbage cans and those porta jons up there, I think that's a good use of the money.
Porta jons, I agree with that. And it was only fifteen hundred, did you say, or seventeen hundred?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. Yeah, so that's not much for an extra porta jons. You got people using them instead of not using them.
Well, using them in a designated area instead of using them in a non-designated.
Right.
Well, that gar, I mean, if we're gonna have the dumpsters there, we needed to have the service because not so much last year. Other, well, the start of the year, when we have water there, but you'd go by there on a Sunday night, Monday morning. And they're, they're not only be fully full, they'd be garbage around it. So that's when I talked to Sean, whoever, I said, let's, let's make sure we dump those like on the first of the weekend. I mean, dump them Friday and Monday maybe. Because that, they, they fell off during the week.
Saturday and Sunday, big use.
Yeah. Oh, huge.
And so we, we mirrored our season at Weaver Memorial and, and North Fork Park is the first of May through the end of October. So we kind of mirrored that timeframe. But I believe the Forest Service is really Memorial Day through Labor Day. And so do you guys have a preference on how we schedule that this year? Would you like the May first to the, maybe even end of September? On those waste management issues?
I have an opinion there.
Yeah.
I think we should start earlier, possibly, maybe end a little earlier because I'm worried about water. I think, I think it ties it to the water level.
I'll be honest with you, I have no opinion there. You guys have always been very responsible and whatever needs to be done, you've done. So I just say, go do your thing.
I, I would rather have them there than not there. And just for the sake of saving a thousand bucks.
Good point.
I mean.
Good point.
So.
So just make sure you do what should be done.
You know, you guys know the traffic. You're gonna be able to say, look, things are slacking off or, boy, guess, you know, we got a great September. People are continuing to use these. You might have to keep them up till the end of September.
Okay, that sounds good.
To me, that's your decision.
I agree.
You okay with that?
That's great.
Okay, so as of right now, we are just continuing to collect that ninety-four thousand to put toward any projects that we, you know, we finally deem as. And as you guys know, Gary Myers and Ashley are working with Sean and. Zach from the Forest Service to, for that overall plan that's gonna deal with the Great American Outdoor Act money. And I checked in with Gary on that. And as of right now, he is kind of waiting for some templates so that he can submit his plans. And then once those plans are approved, they can move to the next step there.
Right. So do you have any projects up there or things up around the dam that, you know, this money is kind of related to that, that we could maybe fund with some of us?
I think it really all depends on what Gary and those guys come back with those plans that they're working.
Yeah, I think we have to wait. I mean, that was a big, that was a big step when we did that contract last year with the Forest Service. They agreed to put in some funding that funded Gary and, but when, and then we did the Utah, remember we did the Utah State?
Yeah.
Study, which was a great study. But, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of money that can be spent there, but I think we wait. For him to complete it and then see how much we get from the feds. But there's a, we've got, there's a priority set in terms of, you know, Pelican, Middle Inlet. Windsurfers, we know that there's the four major reason, or four major poles up there that need to be dealt with.
Well, anything we could get, if we had to have Joe go up there and do a little rock moving or something, make them a little nicer. Anything we do.
How do you, how do you feel things are going, Jennifer?
I think they're going fine. I think that I probably need to, you know, you and I spoke about this, I think it was last week when I told you we were gonna be on the agenda today. And I think we just probably need to make sure that that process with the Great American Outdoor Act doesn't. Fall into too many long stretches without some, some progress. So.
Now, they've talked, was I talking to you or about the Pineview Committee?
Uh huh, yes.
I think it was Sean that talked about maybe bringing that back.
Yes.
The mayor, the new mayor?
Well, with the mayor and then there was a, there was, when I.
Sean Harwood.
When I first went into that, there was like eight or ten people. So you have yacht, yacht club people, you have the Forest Service, you got the Sheriff's Office. It's kind of everybody that interacts. So I, I, you know, felt that that was a pretty good group to bring together.
Well, if you want, I'm happy to circle back with Sean and find out. Whether it's him or I who kind of jumpstarts that again, so.
Well, it's you.
It's me.
Sean will put that, I'm just telling you right now, Sean, Sean will show up, but he, yeah, he's not, he won't set up the meeting. I think that's kind of our baby to handle if that's okay with you.
Absolutely, absolutely. I will do that.
Are you okay to get that? Are you okay to add that to your, all the other stuff you got?
If you can do that, I mean, we meet, I think we met like once a month.
In the summer?
Yeah, from probably May through September, maybe even May through August. It's pretty much over by September.
Sounds good. I will do that.
Can we hear from Nick? Nick, why don't you unmute yourself and tell us what you thought about last year and what your thinking is about this year?
Well, I appreciate the partnership that we all have here, working together to, to bring some improvements in. I do.
Nick, 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 you're on, you're being recorded. So tell us who you represent and everything so that the recording will know.
Okay, my name's Nick Smith. I'm the General Manager of Utah Recreation Company. We are the current and approved concessionaire to operate all of the facilities for the Forest Service around Pineview Reservoir. And many others that don't apply to this meeting, but. We have this agreement where we collect the three dollar fee for uses at Anderson Cove, Port Ramp Marina, Cemetery Point and Middle Inlet. And those funds go back into what Jennifer was explaining to be used for recreation improvements around the lake. I do agree with what you guys have said there with everything that's been done so far. That is a small price to pay. For those garbage collections and toilets, it is much more expensive and. Time consuming to clean it up if it's, because it'll still be there, whether that dumpster is there or not. So it's, that's a wonderful view of that. And we're happy to join in on that Pineview Committee when that does kick back off. You have my email, Jennifer. We'd be happy to be involved in that. And I do think Great American Outdoor Act would be a good use for some of this as well. Because that's a very complex machine where we have submitted some funding as well. Last year at a commissioner's meeting for funding some of these surveys and things as matches and funding to help kick these projects off. With the Great American Outdoor Act. And that really helps them to get some traction. So we appreciate the partnership and look forward to continuing.
Great. Any questions for Nick, you guys?
Well, I have a lot of questions. Nick, I just want to tell you thanks from my perspective. You guys, you know, come to the table last year to help us that gap between the federal funds to get this survey and stuff that we're doing. You know, you, you've been a great partner for us over the last couple of years. When I first came in before you guys were the concessionaire, it wasn't quite as nice to work with. So we do appreciate you taking a look. And obviously, we'll see where the, where we are this year. I, I don't imagine we're gonna have the traffic just because of water, what appears to be our water level we had three years ago. But I think that'll give us an opportunity to maybe jump on some of these sites so, so that when water comes back, we're prepared for that to happen.
Absolutely.
Great. Thanks, Harvey.
No, that's great. I appreciate you. I've been involved with this for a lot of years and you, you've made a marked improved difference up there. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, Nick. Things seem to be going very well up there right now. Ah, just, we just had a little more water to put in that dam. Our water outlet, let, look, outlook is better than last year's, but not a lot.
Not much, is it?
No, they said, they told us today, and we'll get to finals Friday, but they told us today that with the recent warm weather, that we're about sixty-six percent normal.
Wow, sixty-six percent normal?
Yeah, in the Weber.
That's not good.
No, it's not. So anyway, now we got two storms coming, one not much, the other one hopefully tonight or tomorrow will give us a little. But they did say our ground soil, soil moisture is up.
Really?
Uh huh. So that's up a little.
Well, we're supposed to be raining all week, according to the weather I looked at this morning.
Soil's not too bad.
So with this warm weather, are they concerned about it sending a runoff too fast or?
Exactly.
I mean, it's, my river is running about as high as it did at all last year.
Is it?
Yeah, because this one, I mean, it was seventy, seventy plus degrees in the valley yesterday.
Yeah, that's the concern. That's what you said, that we'll lose it now. They want to keep it up there as long as they can.
Nice to keep it up there.
Right.
Anyway.
That's the way it is. Well, okay, Jennifer.
All right.
The peers, so if you're done, we have no more questions.
I just have one more.
Yeah, please.
And Nick, you're gonna find a, a little even greater attention to detail and proficiency with Jennifer. I've worked around her for nearly three decades. She was in junior high school when I first met her. And she, she's incredibly talented. She's just, I have the utmost respect and. And appreciation for her. So you're gonna, you can't help it to just, you're gonna really like and start depending on her. And she's straight. She'll be as honest and she has a great amount of integrity. She really is wonderful to work with. So I just wanted to let you know what you got here with this, Jennifer.
Warning.
Everything's been very responsive and, and, and great. So we're getting ready to kick things off here and, you know, we'll keep moving forward and do what we can.
Great. All right. Thanks, Nick. Thanks, Nick.
Appreciate you.
Time.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. So. Thanks, Jen.
You bet.
So Brian.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Cowan. I don't see him on there yet.
What's tomorrow morning?
We're still getting.
Seventeen minutes early.
Because it's the fifth one, right? Just wanted to make sure.
So everybody, we're just gonna be kind of talking around here just a little bit because we're a little ahead of schedule. So Commissioner Harvey, did you have anything you wanted to bring up today?
Other than, other than the things that you've covered on the agenda, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay.
The shape we're in. I can tell you that some disappointment out there of not having our golf tournament, but. I will tell you that, just so you know, you know, we're doing these little tours. I'm introducing the mayors to Stephanie.
Oh, good.
And that, Matt Dixon and Russ Porter. Boy, was she well received.
Really good.
And the things that they started going back and forth on, just, they were so, so happy. We're gonna see a lot of positive things with South Ogden. They talked about a nine and a half acre area for redevelopment at the old Gibson's.
Yeah, that's been talked about for a while.
Yeah, they're gonna, they've got another, maybe another duck coming in on the water on that.
Well, you remember, we did a CRA for them. We, we've got an agreement with the CRA, so just up to them to perform now.
I think that's what they're looking at. So they'll be together. That'll be good.
On the north end of that, they've already got about a tenplex being built there right now today.
Do they?
Mm-hmm. At the north end of that.
Well, and you saw that, you see they started their buildings on Fortieth and Adams that we approved about, what, two years ago for CRA?
Yeah, they're putting them in right now. Yeah. Well, there, you're right. South Ogden, they got things going over there.
Oh, and speaking of South, so I talked to Kerry Wallen yesterday.
Oh, good.
We're in, he wants to, and we'll be invited to their ribbon cutting for their new office building. Sometime, first couple of weeks in April, I think. But you'll get an invite.
Great. They, they're moving a lot of dirt up there now.
For the Golden West?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
A lot of dirt. I know they are, because.
When you look at the project Golden West is doing and then the project America First is doing, man alive. Those two, they're gonna, they have, they're a major influence on the county.
Oh, you know, some of the biggest credit unions, both in Weaver County.
Both homegrown, too, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're right, Gabe.
Both homegrown.
Yep.
That's good.
That's good. Well, Gage, you got anything you'd like to bring up?
No, just, so the Kerry Wallen thing, I wanted to make you aware of. I'm, I'm happy to see Jennifer take it over with this Pineview Committee. That's good. I like having the input from those users up there around the dam.
I agree with that.
You know, let, let them know what, you know, let them know that that money we're collecting is going back into the dam, going back into Pineview.
That really should be talked about in the, in the Valley News and that. That really should go through there.
You'd think so, wouldn't you? Yeah. Anyway, that's it, Chair.
All right. Well, anything we can do on parking lots and roads along there to help them?
Yep.
We got some money there to do it. And Joe will be glad to spend it if you want him to do it, or anybody else, I don't care.
I know, I, I want to be a little cryptic with this message so we, so we don't have to go through all the fallerall going into a, a private meeting because we are gonna discuss real estate. We had a meeting that we, that was canceled on Friday. Is that gonna be rescheduled with? The agent?
Oh, yeah, it is.
It's gonna be rescheduled?
Yeah, now, so the reason that that didn't come about is because he, we, he had no response from the potential buyers. And as we, you know, so remember, they submitted the offer, we countered.
Right.
And we're waiting now. So once.
There was no response officially that's.
Yeah, and I said, there's no reason until we know either, either they're in, on or off. So.
Well, this goes back to what you guys said before, about how much of a player are they?
Well, yeah.
With the money they've got and everything that's happened, I would think they'd be beating our door down.
Well, you'd think so. I, I know that they still are in communication with Weaver State since technically that's Weaver State's money.
Right.
They, you know.
Well, maybe because it's multifaceted, that's the reason, you know?
It could be.
I know, I can't.
We should, we should probably put that on our Ogden City agenda. Commissioner Harvey, when we meet with them again, just let, I don't want, I don't want to not inform them of, they, they probably know about it, but they should probably hear that from us, too.
Let me put that on right now.
Do we have, do we have another date set for that?
Tuesday, the fifth of April. Tuesday, the fifth of April.
Is that on the calendar?
I'm looking right now. Boy, April already? Give me a break. Yep.
You know, when you get as old as I am.
Hard Steakhouse.
There you go.
They even go faster.
All right. Well, good. Well, I don't see Brian Cowan on there. Of course, we're still a couple.
Two, we are four minutes early. Probably just.
I'm like, I understand this will be the last update.
Yeah, last one.
We're gonna have, right?
And honestly, the way things go, and I don't expect this to be much of an update. It won't be worth saying, because everything's still going down. And so we're just waiting for him to come on there. Walk in the door. I guess we could do that, but.
He could walk in. More likely. Oh, I think we've got a board health meeting today.
Or would it be next week? Because this is the fifth.
Yeah, this is.
This is the fifth Monday.
Today's the twenty-eighth, right?
Yeah. And Commissioner, this last thing we have on our agenda today, that must have been added recently because I had made another four thirty appointment. So I'm gonna.
Four thirty?
Leave about four fifteen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know what that is. You know, they just stuck it on there. Well, I can't answer.
Well, I was showing it, but now it's not showing on this, so I'm not sure.
Wolf Creek Rezone.
Yeah, what, do you know what that's about?
I don't, I don't. But I got in quite a discussion today in regards to, you know, there's a piece of property. You know where Old Stone Basin Road is?
Yeah.
Where the barn was down below. Have you noticed them excavating lately down there?
I, and I've been meaning to ask our, oh, big time.
Yeah, they're tearing the whole thing up.
Yeah.
Well, Marlon Jensen was telling me today, and I've got to check into it, that that's a billion dollar development that's coming in there. Ten acres. He had the history on this about how it was originally part of his family farm and then. Somebody married into the family and then this one died and went to this one. And in the whole thing, the three part, or the four partners in the law firm ended up buying that ten acres.
That's correct.
And anyway, they've said it all, all this year. Well, they bought that, he told us they bought that ten acres thirty or forty years ago for a hundred thousand dollars for ten acres. He said at the time that was considered to be outlandish.
That was high background.
Yeah, but they bought it. He said they just sold that for four million.
Really? So I thought it sold before, but they just barely sold it?
Well, no, he said it was a year ago or something like that, a year and a half.
But I, so did he say that the law firm sold it or the somebody?
The law firm sold it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Anyway, the. He says that the guy that bought it is putting a billion dollars into it, a billion into that piece of property. And it's like, well, what the heck is he building?
What's he built? Yeah, I'd like, he's.
He's building three homes.
Really?
I said, you're telling me those homes are gonna average three hundred and thirty million apiece? He says, that's what we've been told. He said, now, I'm hoping you can tell me if that's BS or the truth. And I said, well, I can't tell you anything. But I says, when they come get a building permit, they have to estimate the value. So I says.
We should, when we, we ought to ask that.
I don't know, three hundred million. You can't even get to three hundred million in Beverly Hills.
No.
With the spelling home.
But they, they have spent a lot of money on the road and.
Yeah, they're really going at it right now.
Yeah, I don't, it's a tease. I don't know.
That's what he told me. That they, it hurt a billionaire bought that and he's gonna.
I need to find out. It looks to me like it's more one building, because they put the road in, they, right now, they're just digging like, it looks like a foundation. On that lower, on the north portion of that property.
Well, he said, he said that they're excavating a hole down there and they're gonna put a forty car parking facility underneath the main building.
Wow, okay.
I guarantee you, there ain't gonna be any Pinots or Gremlins in that.
Wow.
That's right.
Well, you're right, yeah. Critchlow and, so my uncle was part of that law.
Yeah, Bob. Yeah, that's right. He owned one, one fourth of that.
Whatever they have. Critchlow. Even, yeah. Marlon was part of that. I think cousin, well, I'm not sure Buck was still in when they did that.
Cows on.
They only mentioned Bob.
Yeah, Bob, Bob was part of that original group.
Okay, Brian Cowan. Hello.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hey, Brian.
How you doing?
You talk about a three hundred million dollar home and I feel like I need a raise.
Oh, yeah. Don't we all?
I think we all will for that, Brian.
All right, Brian, you're, you're up today. Go ahead and take it over.
Thanks, Commissioner. Well, this will be the last time I check in with you. We've scheduled out through the end of the month. And in the future, we'll just mon, I'll monitor what's happening and if. end of the month, and in the future, we'll just mon, I'll monitor what's happening, and if, uh, or, or if we have other issues that I need to bring to your attention, we'll make sure we schedule time on your, on your work sessions for that. Um, as the situation, we're, we're almost identical to what we were last week. We had a really steep decline in cases, but we've kind of leveled out, and we're averaging about ten new cases a day right now. Um, which is very easy to manage, um, starting to feel like, uh, for the most part, activities here at the Health Department are getting back to what they were before COVID. Um, we, looking at how we downsized some of our staffing that we brought on to COVID, some of it we'll plan on keeping towards the end of the school year, uh, just in case, but, uh, we're making some changes along that way, but, uh, kind of, kind of a relief, really, to situation, so. Uh, currently, we have three hundred and eleven active cases, uh, in our, in our district, that's down sixty-three from last week. Last week was three hundred and seventy-four. Yes, there were, there's kind of an, uh, there's been sixteen new deaths reported over the last week, but those deaths didn't happen in the last week. Uh, just over the last couple of months, is the, as the Medical Examiner's Office has been, has been getting caught up with issuing these causes of deaths on these, um, so a total of four hundred and forty-five deaths in Weaver, Morgan Health District from COVID. Hospitals look, uh, very good as well. Only thirteen COVID hospitalizations, two of those, uh, in the ICE, ICU. Um, and just kind of an interesting, uh, statistic, to, uh, point of discussion that occurred over the last week. Um, we, for the first time since COVID, we've actually had more influenza hospitalizations, uh, over in last week than we have had COVID, uh, hospitalizations, so. I've not, it doesn't really mean a whole lot, just kind of an interesting statistic to look at. Um, school situations, things are very good at the schools as well, um, only eight active cases in our schools, uh, right now, between the three school districts that we serve, uh, the impact rules is all, so very, much better situation than we've had in the past. That's my report.
Great, Commissioners, questions?
Great report, Brian.
That's great. So Brian, we're gonna be looking at this, uh, now through the rearview mirror, right?
I hope so, um, you know, will, it'll be a new disease that we add to the list of the ones that we currently monitor for um, and track, and, and I think it'll just become part of our public outreach that we do, along with other infectious diseases, uh, to help, help people find ways to reduce their risk.
Great. All right, well, that's really, really good, I'm very happy with that. Any questions, either of you?
Yeah, Brian, do we have a board of health meeting tonight, today?
Enough items on the agenda to ha, schedule it for tonight, so, uh, it's been canceled. We'll be, uh, on April twenty, uh, fifth for the next one.
Yeah, so, yeah, so tonight's meeting's canceled. All right, I just need to know that.
Well, there you go, Gage, you wondered why it was off your-
Yeah.
Your, uh-
It was on there, it was on there yesterday, this morning it was Xed out, so I assumed something happened.
Yeah. All right, Brian, thanks to you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioners, have a good afternoon.
You bet.
Thanks, Brian, talk to you soon.
Well, there you go, that was quick. Well, Ryan Arbonne is next at three thirty, so we've really got, uh, twenty minutes to kill here.
We got, uh, yeah, twenty, twenty-four minutes.
Well, then I'll motion Saunter, again, I can answer emails.
Second.
I'll first say hi.
Hi.
All right, okay, so we're, we're going to go into a saunter for twenty minutes, everybody, we'll be back. You have your time, fifteen minutes. All right, everybody, we're back in session for more saunter, it's, uh, three thirty-one, and Sheriff Ryan Arbonne's here. So Ryan, uh, Sheriff, go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, like I said a minute ago, be a sweet, uh, part, uh, last week, I gave you a draft proposal of the changes that may be needed or done. We cannot find a floor plan.
Wow.
To Kiesel.
Hey.
Nope, nowhere to be found.
Too bad.
Yes, and so I wanna follow up with that, I think that we're in a position to, uh, look for guidance of direction from, uh, the Commission on the direction of our, our, uh, possible proposal for expansion. Uh, so, you know, uh, we could talk a little bit about that, and then also, just wanna give you a heads up that Chief Perry is, uh, finalizing, uh, uh, in the, uh, budget from last year, there was a note in there that the Commission wanted to come back and revisit uh, law enforcement pay, so we've been working with Sarah and Scott Park, getting some of that together, we're not ready to give that to yet, but it should be next week or the week after, so just a heads up on that's coming.
Good.
So that's it, short and sweet.
Wow, good. We heard from Horton today how successfully your, uh, drones, drones were.
We, we are saving more lives with drones on search and rescue in the, across the United States, with the exception of one other county. It's just what we've done, it's just amazing, and the money, the time, and the resources that we're saving with the drones, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, I'm all for that, so.
Ryder had the right idea, he just wanted to do it with balloons.
He wanted to do it, he wanted to do it with the, what was the, the, what's that, the blimp, the, what was the one?
It was ahead of his time.
Hindenburg.
Hindenburg.
Yeah, he was a, he was just ahead of his time, Ryder was.
The, 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 now, I, I wasn't here, but it was in the news, I heard about it, but the thing I wanna make sure that everybody knows that the key difference between drones, obviously, versus a blimp, but ours are response drones on the enforcement side, they're not patrol, they're not just out combing the skies.
Right.
We're not, we're, we're very careful and very cognizant of the Fourth Amendment through this, and plus, as you guys know, and I know you are, we are big proponents of the Fourth Amendment, and we're not gonna let supplement that or, or anything, so we're, we're gonna, county attorneys make sure that goes through the right way.
So, when you say, uh, expansion, where are we gonna go from here? Uh, I don't know, what do you wanna do here, Gage? You wanna, uh, uh, do you wanna jump into some kind of a project in a week or two? Do you wanna, uh, report? Do you want somebody to follow up?
Well, I think-
You know, it all comes down to money, right?
Well, it comes down to money, but we talked last week about doing our five-year plan.
Yeah.
And updating that five-year plan, I think this was a good opportunity to start looking, nailing down that five-year plan and seeing where that fits in, so we're not making promises we can't keep.
I think that's a good, this, this is a great way to segue into that.
But you're, but you're right, Scott, it's about dollars, and obviously, we don't have the resources in the county so to, to move forward on that entire project.
So if you don't mind me interjecting here, I wanna, I wanna make sure you guys, uh, are clear with what we're doing, and but what we're being advised to do. So my understanding of the plan was, put all this together, and then we do a proposal, which we have, and then it was a, a threshold of the County Commission to say, is this something that goes on to the Finance Committee to see how it would be funded? And so, we think we've done all of that, and then it needs to come to the Commission to say, let's have the Finance Committee look at it. Again, that's not a commitment, but it's how would we fund it? And, and then if it all looks, you know, again, I'm very ignorant, and this is new to me, I wanna make sure I'm not stepping on toes, number one. Number two, I'll make sure it's the right way, but whatever the Finance Committee decides is the proper way, then we can go forward with whatever direction, and if it means a geo bond, if it means whatever avenue, that's where, where I'm at now, so I'm, I was told to wait for the go-ahead, or to go to the Finance Committee. Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at, so if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I don't know.
No, I'm not sure you're wrong.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not sure it's wrong, I, I just think the procedure, though, needs to be, the, we just, we just reconstituted that Project Committee last week.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, yes.
Just last week.
Just last week, so I think we're talking the same thing, right?
Right.
The Finance Committee is actually what I call Projects Committee.
John Bond, Scott Park, uh, Ricky Hatch, and a member of a, it's a financial institution, like a bank or something.
I've got Co, Culture Parks and Recreation and the Member of the Commission, which I think is, I think is me.
And, well, yeah, you were on there, right? So I would like, I, I think that's exactly right, I think it has to go to that Finance Committee, that, we need, we need to have that discussion as far as, okay, here's our, here's our, here's our projects, let's prioritize them, and then let's decide how we're gonna finance.
Yeah, do you wanna go to a priority, or to a, uh, five-year plan first, or after?
Well, I think you gotta have the five, I'd like to have the five-year plan in place before, before we make, I mean, we can't make any commitments. On, I mean, we could say, look, this is how you're gonna finance it, but I mean, this is, this falls right up the IGG line.
Right.
Look, you prioritize them based upon need, and then you, based upon that priority, then you go looking for money. I don't, it doesn't make sense to say, okay, we're gonna do this project, and bond on it, if there's three projects that are in front of it.
Right.
Is that, see what I'm saying?
Right, exactly.
So, that's how I see it coming out.
No, like I said, I don't know the process, that's, this is what the information I have is what, and I, and I don't know for sure, that's why I wanna tell you where I'm at, and what I know.
We probably should sit down and have a discussion with that Finance Committee, and just say, look, this is kinda how we see this should come together.
So don't you wanna start the five-year program, uh, capital improvement program?
Yeah.
Isn't that our next step?
I, I, hundred percent.
Okay, so I'll start, uh,
Hundred percent.
Uh, uh, scheduling, a committee, or to get together and start talking about a five-year capital improvement.
Perfect, and I think Harvey's the chair, he's the Commissioner on that, right?
On the Finance Committee.
No, the Finance Committee.
But this is the five-year.
Just, yeah.
Okay, it's the funding arm of the five-year.
All right.
Right. So, to begin with, it'll just be, uh, I think it's just, well, it's just us.
And Mustafa Park and-
Yeah, Park and Bond and those guys.
Whoever you want involved with the five-year plan, we should start that process.
Right, we should start that, and we ought to have each one, each agency come in and, uh, pitch their, their,
I-
Their project.
I think now's the time to do that.
I do, too.
I mean, we've got, we've got some big decisions we'll be making here in the next, probably, hopefully, two months or quicker on this building. And what we do, our parking terrace, you know, the Sheriff's Office, uh, you know, a number of other things. I think, you know, we've gotta take a serious look at Kiesel.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, in my opinion, it's time to deal with Kiesel.
I agree with that, too, Gage.
I think we've been kicking this can down the road and-
For years.
We know what it is.
Well, before we ever got here.
Oh, long before. And then we have to have that discussion with Ogden City to see where we are, but right now, Kiesel's not providing us any real value. I mean, it's some value, but not that we should expect.
If we-
That be correct, or?
You can, yes.
To me, like, the value of Kiesel keeps going up and down, depending, as you try to bring these release programs going, that's the only place you got to do it, so when you're not doing them, the value's down, and when you are doing, the value's up, because it's the only place you can do them.
Well, when we don't have the, the ability to provide these programs, there is a, there is a question of public safety on this.
Right.
Because instead of having this many options, from the courts, the judges, we have this many. And so that's gonna be, that's a big challenge right now, is we're down to this many, and we owe it to the public to provide, cause uh, you know, we're seeing people not being sent us to jail like they used to be for this and that, and so there's these alternative programs.
Yeah.
But sometimes the program's just not there, and then we don't have the space in the jail, so now we got them out in, out in the public.
Well, I think that has to be part of any decision we make, as far as, to me, that's, Kiesel projects is, you know, as important as anything else we have.
I agree with that. So if a judge comes up with a program, he can't just tell you what to do, a judge?
Hmm, sometimes, they, I mean, if they want him in the jail.
Well, if they want him in the jail, they can, but they can't say, Sheriff, why don't you guys start this program? As you say, look, it's no money, they can't-
Well, that's where we're at now.
How we're gonna fund it?
Yes, we know our limits, they, we have a great, uh, communication, uh, uh, channels through them. We meet, our lieutenant meets with the judges regularly, tells them the updates, what we have, what we don't have. Uh, some programs they want brought back, because they saw success before, we just don't have it for them right now. And, and, and let's keep in mind, too, a lot of this has to do with staffing, not just facilities, but it's staffing.
That's correct.
But we do, uh, when the, uh, state legislature reduced the law, uh, for nineteen-year-olds, we have a huge influx. If, right now, we were down forty-three in corrections, on paper, right now, we're only down twenty-eight. So the pedal is swinging. Enforcement, we were down, uh, fifteen or sixteen, now we're down to like ten. So it's coming back, it's good.
Good.
So it is coming back?
It's coming back, yes.
Good job.
We got some great staff, we really do, they, 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 that is me.
Well, I'll get this process started then, okay?
I think that'd be great.
Okay.
What can we do for you, Commissioner?
Nothing for me, what about you two? Both doing good with them?
You did what you need.
I think, I think we're in good shape.
Yeah, I had a good day Saturday.
Yeah, screw, good day, thank you.
You had a good day, real good day.
Well. Okay.
Okay.
Keep doing that. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Take care, thanks, Ryan.
Well, I'll have the gals set that up, and, uh, we'll start that, uh, start looking at our, uh, long-term capital plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Hey.
Great, all right, well, hopefully those guys will be here. Here they are, right now, thank you. I appreciate you coming fifteen minutes early.
Of course.
Thank you.
Eric.
Good timing.
Just, oh, John.
Is it a good mood, or?
We're in a good mood.
Paul, for you.
For me, I was like, ah. Lots of chocolate, John.
And, how you doing?
That's fine.
Thank you, good, how are you?
Good, you're still here, that's good.
They keep asking me to not show up.
Oh, come on.
No, no.
All right, who's running this meeting?
I, I set it up.
All right, Mr. Burton, go ahead.
Commissioners, we've got a, an application submitted, I believe it's February to the end of January. Uh, Wolf Creek, John Lewis submitted a rezone application, um, and we wanted to kinda go over that with you for a few reasons, one, we wanted to give you a heads up that, uh, it's coming down the pipeline, and two, uh, we wanted to just get your, I guess, thoughts on a, a few things.
Before you do that, go up there on that box, hit minus there on that.
Oh, sorry, I always forget to do that.
Yeah, it's okay, you did it. Of course, you may have to go back to share the screen. Right?
It's, yeah, I'm sure. Maybe while I'm pulling this up, I don't know if you guys wanna add anything to it.
Well, yeah, I think, just briefly, just wanted to show you what we're, we're trying to accomplish here, so I'm gonna pull up some map. Here, there.
It's right there. You're doing good, you bet.
So. What, what we got here? Okay, so essentially, we're coming in, and there's some newly acquired property here. This is down below Trappers, calling it Kobe Ranch, and then we have a section up here that was part of all this project Eagles Ridge, we call them, um, Eagle Crest. So with those additions, we believe that there's twenty-three ninety units in the whole Wolf Creek. Twenty-three hundred? Yeah, two, two thousand.
That's the original development.
Oh, okay, got it, okay.
The, the one thing I wanna, I'm gonna preempt you, but the one thing, I wanna make sure everyone totally understands, we're not adding any density to this. We're not re-upping, we're not upzoning, we're not changing anything, we're just shifting.
Funny, though, we, you keep saying that, not just you, but other people up there developing, and our sister is going crazy, because they see so much development. It's like, look, this is, this predates us, as a commission.
Yeah.
We're, we're just simply watching what all of you put into place. Oh, we didn't think it'd be this much.
These units were probably put in-
Forty years ago.
Fifteen, twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Forty, forty, okay.
They were there from John Log days.
Were they there from Log, yeah?
Wolf Creek used to be seventy-five hundred acres.
Yeah.
Oh, did it?
If you go back to the six, seventy-five hundred acres, the Fullers sold it. So at seventy-five hundred acres, they cut off five thousand of it and gave it to the Wildlife Management, the No Fork Wildlife Management. That's where all that open space came from, and they kept the density with a development agreement on this land, so this has twenty-five hundred roughly things from those days when it was seventy-five hundred acres.
Right.
So we've, we've just been reshuffling ever since, but when people hear rezone- When, when they hear rezone, they think we're adding-
Fullers, that's his dad.
I think so, yeah.
Granddad, yeah.
So just, everyone just needs- So, just, everyone just needs,
Hey, hey, it's, hey, yeah. Hanes goes back to Hanes' time, or maybe before.
Oh, it can't.
Yeah, it can't.
But, and, um, but there's nothing new being added here. We're just a village and we're reshuffling as we've done ten of the times, nothing new.
Okay.
Okay, part of, part of that shuffling involves a couple of things, um, I think, maybe the biggest things to just let you know of is, one of them, John's proposing some storage units, right?
Just, well, before we get to the details, let me, let me have Eric finish with thirty thousand feet and say, okay, where is it now and where is it gonna go?
Yeah.
Just so you know where it came from.
You go on there.
All right. So, Steve and I have been working through these numbers, but we determined that there's thousand seventy-eight things, entitlements that have yet to be platted or recorded. So, what we're proposing in this rezone, our core, commercial core area over here, we have two hundred and forty-one.
Today.
Today. Today, so what we like to do is take fifty-five of these, move them to the Kobe Ranch development, and then another twenty-six up here to the Eagles. So, that way, at the end of the day, we'd be having one hundred and sixty left in our core, and our, our current plan, we should have one hundred and forty-four.
Except for that, the other thing I wanna just point out, and this is really for the public's benefit, but, you know, this is a village. We all elected this to be a village decades and decades ago, and villages need density in the center. And as you go out, you get less dense, and as you go out even further, less dense, so you have hotels and condos and nightly rentals and things like that. And as you go out, sometimes you have another density spot, and if you're gonna have more density, you wanna put it next to that density, so that's why we put the condos near the dense. And then, as you get down to the corridors that come through, that's where you wanna spread it out and have three-acre stuff, so this is all three-acre, doesn't even need a rezone. So, three acre, then two acre, then condos, then more condos, so that's the whole concept behind this, we're not trying to change anything or add anything.
So, three acres, two acres, one acre, then condos?
No, it's actually three acres, and then it's even three acres surrounded by open space, so it's technically spread out more than that, and that's on the corridor, on the highway.
Okay.
And as you go back towards up the hill, it goes to two acre, and then you go a little bit further and you get to the townhomes. And then I pulled all that two thousand feet away from Trappers, so they wouldn't look at these, they'd be down below them, so you'd have to look below the power lines to see us.
So, you didn't go just to the power lines or just?
I went, I went below the power lines, but the property goes to the back fences of Trappers. So, I purposely went literally two thousand feet away from the closest structure just to give them open space and a buffer.
That's smart.
So, know what, you know, people living there is not gonna be happy about it, I get it, but it's gotta go somewhere, so I'd rather it go there than on the highway or somewhere else.
Yeah.
So,
Yeah, I agree with your assessment.
In, in terms of specifics, you know, we, when we go over here and we do this density stuff, that's Orlov's that's been there for thirty years or twenty-five years. We're just now doing it for him instead of him, but with doing that corridor, we talked about, you know, bringing North Ogden Divide through, and we would share with that, we talked about doing storage units.
So, we've got our funding. This is that road that goes through, right, right there?
Yep.
Yeah, so, uh, the county got that on the long, on the short-term plan for, uh, funding, and we're just, what, a year or so away from that?
Yeah.
I think.
Well, the big thing you guys had, you needed was all that land dedicated to you, so we went and got the plat signed and recorded, it's now all in your name.
Is it?
Yep.
So, it's ready to go as far as you got.
It's in your name. Here for you guys to sign. I guess you have to sign.
We have all the signatures, I think tomorrow probably it'll be recorded.
I stand, okay.
Good to know.
Good.
Yeah.
That's good.
So, one thing I was gonna suggest, Steve, is, you know, we can get into the architecture and make sure it's okay with you guys and how it looks and stuff, but in terms of how we're paying for this, you know, I'd like to either suggest we put together a development agreement or a court link and get going, but let's, let's put that together and nail it down to how much per front door.
Right.
So that the next thing we close goes into your pocket and pays for this.
We agree with that.
Oh.
Now,
Do you want to take a crack at it and give it to Courtney?
So, we'll, we'll probably do, so, these changes that we're talking about, they will go to the planning commission first, like they have to, probably in April, in the form of, um, a, an amended development agreement for Wolf Creek, as well as a rezone to what we call the Wolf Creek Village Zone. So, you know, we've already done the Eden Village Zone, right now, we'll work on the Nordic Village Zone, this will be the, the Wolf Creek Village Zone. And we can write that into the development agreement, something about, uh, payment of, of fairways specifically, that's what we're talking about, right?
Well, it's everything around it, so bridges, rest, Eagle Point, everything we're gonna do there, except for the people we,
Well, Steve, I'll have a meeting set up to start this, okay? So, I will do that, I'm writing myself most right now.
I wanna say it's like fifteen hundred bucks a front door or something like, some kind of targeted impact fee that the developers pay for that corridor so that, you know, it's accessible, plus, plus it's a really good safety valve for our valley, or for our resort.
Yeah, okay. Uh, as this goes to the planning commission, we're gonna look at the specifics of everything that John's asking for. One of them that we wanted to bring up, that mentioned your storage units, uh, we just kinda wanted to get maybe your take on this idea, it's not something that planning staff has had really the chance to digest. Uh, but, we think there's probably a way to do it, if you call us a village area and push the storage units back and put some residential out in front, so you've got like uses across from each other. You guys have any thoughts on stor- stored commercial, I mean, John, that's what these are, right, anybody in the valley?
Yeah, I, I think that's the difference that we talked about last time, was if, if they were just for that project, then it's an accessory use, we don't really have to change anything or get, it's not that hard to get that approved, but if it's open to everybody, now it throws it into a different category, and we're kinda doing that in exchange for paying for the road, but how do we?
You're aware that we just approved a storage unit up there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've just got tons of customers who we CC and R it, so you can't put boats out, you can't put,
Yeah.
You know, there's just a lot of people who could use art, I don't think it's gonna go very far, it's, it's just gonna be the people in this area, but I don't wanna just say it's just theirs.
Sure.
Um, but, you know, if you want, first of all, do you, you know, when you're up there, Orlov has that pit?
Yeah.
This gravel pit there?
Yeah, no.
This is in the bottom of that pit.
Yeah, I know where you're talking.
So, it's really a good spot, I, I went with some people at, at Eagle Ridge and looked to see if you could see it from their house, Will Hayman. You can't see it from his house, thankfully, but I, I purposely took him over there to show, okay, that's what I'm thinking, what do you think? So, there's a berm, it's actually would work really well to hide back there, but if you wanna push it back further, we got plenty of land to do it. And if you want us to put, you know, residential in front of it, great, I've got density, I can do it. Um, you tell me what you want, I'll be glad to do it, either way, the intent is to hide it. And, if you can see it somehow, and I don't think anyone can see it except from above, which will be the bridges, my own stuff, you know, I want it to look like a barn or look like something agricultural.
Yeah, that's the only requirement we had on that other.
We have.
It'll look agricultural, so we would expect you to do the same thing.
Yeah, but I think I can hide a lot of it with mound.
Scott, I moved this up a little fifteen minutes, I'm sorry if I caused you to be late, I apologize.
Yeah, so, you know, we're just looking to move forward, you know, with the overall sketch, but subject to you guys saying what you want in front of it, I, if you wanna force me to make more condos, that's great, that's not a bad thing, but if you want me just to hide them in behind mounds, that, that's what my original intent was to do. If you said, no, we want you to face it with residential along that road, cause it's, that would be pretty affordable stuff, then, you know, as long as I bring the density to it from somewhere else on the valley floor, for our own pot and not create anything new, that might be a good way to hide them.
So, that, I mean, you can imagine, this, this might be the biggest concern that comes up at, at a planning commission or even at the public hearing, the county commission. I guess, my perfect scenario would be to ask for some, maybe some kinda three-D modeling to know what this would look like from Eagle Ridge, maybe, uh, where most of the houses existing are and, and will be, uh, but I, that, I guess that's the other reason I set this up with the commission is to find out their take on the storage units.
I, we talked about this before, this was on a plan, and we, she showed us down in that little gravel area before. I don't think we had any concerns as part of that was laid out before. No, I, my, my opinion hasn't changed on.
You don't have Eagle, you don't have Google Earth on there, right?
Can.
Sure. I don't know, that's, that might be a long way to go, but if you get on Google Earth and go to there, what you find is that high-density area that, that, um, Eagle Point is a big hill, and that is actually what's between you and Eagle Ridge. So, you'll see the condos, but you won't see behind the condos down in the gully from Eagle Ridge, but eat Google Earth, we'll show you that if you do the three-D.
Well, I don't have any use with that location, I mean, I wish we would've done this twenty years ago, because, you know, the thought process before, let's put those storage units right next to the roads, well, now you, now you have bad views for anybody coming in, cause they're looking at storage unit, you, you really impacted the value of the ground around it, so, the more, uh, conservative and I guess the placement of that, off the roads, off where it's not gonna have any impact directly on that view of the people, is what I like to see.
Well, we're doing kind of affordable, I don't know, condos on this side of the road, so we just do them on this side of the road, and then have parking behind it, and then storage behind that. You know, it's a destination, they, they don't need to see it from the road, don't know where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
But that'd hide it.
I agree.
Um, one of the things, one of the things we asked for was building elevations, um, I know we had submitted some pictures of the existing units to the south. Uh, at least from a staff perspective, we'd wanna see some better architecture, um, I don't necessarily know about materials specifically, but I think we've looked at it in the past, as you know, kind of like a barn type, and maybe that's not what's best for this area, um, I think we've looked at maybe the planning commission as well as the county commission to find out what we want.
You're talking about for the storage?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, honestly, we would just look at what you just approved and we would make some kind of, uh, version of that for us, you know, something rural. I think barns actually make the most sense, so barn-like. Um, but to me, you know, have the back wall with concrete and then fill it up with dirt, so it's literally a bunker in the front of it, you know, it's got enough topography where you could really hide this and dirt half of it, but whatever is showing, whatever's visible should look like it's been there for a long.
Aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah. That's easy.
But we owe him some examples.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. I don't know if you guys have any other thoughts, we just wanted to bring the project up with you and make, make you aware of it, so.
I don't have any more thoughts.
Yes.
It's your development, as long as it's, uh,
I, I guess I'm looking to be on the agenda as soon as possible, and any idea how soon we could go in front of the planning commission?
Uh, the next available date would be April twenty-sixth, that's the date that Eric and I,
So, we got a week or two to get you some elevations and some other stuff, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing we would be looking for, John, is addressing stormwater, storage units are great, they're very valuable and they're needed, the problem is, there's a lot of impervious surfaces and hardscape, so, we're gonna be looking for you to show us how that works, how's the tamed, nothing, nothing new.
There's currently, I noticed, right before you get to the pit, there's a giant detention basin there, which must be on your map somewhere, and it's gonna, I think it eventually is along the road, so we'd probably start with that and enlarge it, but we'll put a plan together with Carver.
Yeah.
Get it to him.
Where do you guys come up with, show us?
Yeah.
Well, we're tweaking our conceptual plan right now to add that multi-tamer.
You know, behind it is all open space and ponds for irrigation.
Yeah.
So, if you look at that map and look above, there's some really nice open space, there's currently a cool bike trail that goes through there, Sidewinder. So, we're looking forward to going it out.
You got your water situation?
You know, I just copied you guys on an email, um, so everyone has it, uh, but we just requested, we, we put it to Wolf Creek Water and Sewer really simply, so, we, just so you guys know, we offered them, uh, we have a hundred gallon a minute well at Osprey, which we can pipe up the road and get them three hundred houses. That would take, you know, six months, but we can do that. We said, we'll write you a check for seven hundred grand and we'll bring our well driller, instead of going to the next well at our place at Osprey, we'll come over and drill out your west well, which their hydrologist said, yeah, if you drill there and you spend the money, you probably will hit water, we think you will. Um, but we said, we'll spend the money, and if we don't find water like you just didn't find water, we'll eat it, so no risk. And if you find water, you guys can have it for your customers, and then if there's anything over and above what you used to have, we'll take that, or fifty-fifty or whatever. Um, at Osprey, we're drilling a second well that would be another three hundred houses, we'll give you guys that. We have a secondary water, uh, well that is really gonna be great stuff, that might power the whole golf course, we'll give you that.
Where's that going?
We're gonna pipe it all up to Wolf Creek.
So, all your wells will be on Osprey? In exchange?
All the water that we've developed, we don't need at Osprey, cause we have Nordic.
Right.
So, all this water.
In exchange for what?
Well, the easiest thing right now to get us on your agenda, cause we're trying to get on the agenda for Osprey, and we can work out bigger, better plans later, but we just need, we can't get on there without a feasibility letter. We have a sewer plant that has been approved by the state, but the disposal is the problem. The treated water, which is cleaner than septic, they don't know how to dispose of it, it's, it's the most bizarre set of rules.
Yeah.
They're forcing us to try to do septic, and I'm just not gonna do septic, so now we're stuck. But if all Miranda does is give us the right to dump our treated water over there, which they can use on the golf course, that's all we're asking.
So, the golf course is not yours, you don't know?
No, it is.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
So, we have a meeting coming, and I think you're gonna be invited to that, where we can sit down and talk wastewater on that whole hill.
Well, here's the thing, we wanna be that solution for you, but it's gonna take us all three months, six months, it's gonna take a little while to iron out the big picture, but we're presenting a plan to you guys that shows our two hundred things expandable to at least two thousand. And if Miranda wants to run it, that's great, if you guys wanna run it, that's great, we don't care, but our whole thing is we can fund this, only if we get to record it. We can't get on in front of the commission at this point, so, we're just looking for a, a, a start card here, just, just give us something to get going. And then, my guess is, we'll end up being absorbed by them, or we'll build our own and you absorb us, and she takes care of it, or whatever, I don't care. But I, if I don't get on the agenda, then I don't get reported, then I don't get funded, then I can't pay her for all these upgrades, fix her resort. So, we put all that in email, we put it out there, we need it really within a week, so that we can give that to the state, so they can give you guys a feasibility letter, right, Steve? You need a feasibility, yeah, so.
Where we, where at, are we at with that request, Steve?
They're stuck on me.
Yeah, we are waiting for John to supply us a feasibility letter.
I, like I said, I have the feasibility for the plant, but not the reuse, and they're stuck, you know, at the DEQ, I guess, going, we don't know how to do subsurface treated water injection.
Yeah.
Rapid infiltration basins, they can't figure, you know, the footprint to absorb that for a septic is this big, and the footprint for treated, which is much cleaner, is this big. For two thousand houses, the absorption field is the size of Eden, so their math is wrong, and they know it, but it's gonna take a while for them to figure that out, and the reuse, all that stuff's gonna take six months.
Yeah.
But I gotta, I gotta start, or I'm stuck, and I lose the market and then I can't pay for any of this. So, I don't wanna ask you guys to do something special and put me on the planning agenda for at least preliminary, cause I feel like I'm this close to having feasibility, but I don't have feasibility. So, if all she does is give me that letter, and I give her all these resources for water, man, that seems like a win-win.
Sounds to me like it.
Yeah, the only thing I've ever heard them say is capacity, right, Jim, so, if we do this, there's two hundred more things on our system, and I, I will give you a letter right now, taking out two hundred things from Wolf Creek until there's a better fix, so your capacity won't even change.
Right.
So, I tried to put this letter in terms of it's a no, no-brainer, but I'm not sure it's gonna work, I, I, my fingers crossed.
Yeah.
But.
It sounds like a pretty good plan to me, if you can pull it off.
Someone tell me what I'm missing here, I'm gonna pay for it, if it doesn't work, it's my problem, and we're not impacting them at all, and this helps everybody at Wolf Creek, including myself.
Yeah.
And, and everyone gets to enjoy the benefits immediately, not just me and then them, it's all shared. So, I'm trying to put our best foot forward, so I'm hopeful, fingers crossed.
I get it. Well, it's wonderful.
All right, well, your answer today then on the, uh, uh, storage units is positive, keep going.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, thanks, you guys.
Thanks, John. Thanks, guys.
Very appreciative of all.
Always a pleasure.
Gotta settle down.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You will.
I get more work done than that.
So, John? Hold on, you're on the Upper Valley Planning Commission.
I am, yeah.
Yeah. Sit down a second, so, hey, uh, uh, Steve Burton, have him come back in here. Huh? Well, we're done with our agenda.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second?
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate.